... entitled Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notices of March 26, 2012. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, the North Jersey Herald News, and the Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertising the Nutley Sun on April 5, 2012, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. In consideration of all here present and in recognition of the importance of these proceedings, it is requested that all cellphones and pagers be turned off or silenced for the duration of the meeting. Thank you. Please rise, Philip Flexon. On Tuesday, November 6, 2012, the annual school board election in the Nutley School District was held. Voting was conducted for the election of three members to the Board of Education for a three-year term. The results of the election were as follows. Candidates for the three-year terms were Ryan Klein with 4,357 votes, Kevin Giorgetti with 2,962, Deborah J. Russo 4,456, Thomas J. Spazato 4,657, and Alan C. Thomas 3,302. The candidates elected were Ryan Klein, Deborah J. Russo, and Thomas J. Spazato, each for a three-year term. A copy of this report will be entered into the official minutes of the Board of Education. At this time, I would like to administer the oath of office to the three candidates, starting with Ryan Klein. Meet me down at the microphone, and if Brian's family would like to join him, please come forward.
I, Ryan Klein. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Saint. To the Saint. And to the government established. And to the government established. In the United States and this state. In the United States and this state. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. So help me God. I, Ryan Klein. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I possess the qualifications. That I possess the qualifications. Prescribed by law. Prescribed by law. With the office of member of the Board of Education. With the office of member of the Board of Education. And not disqualified as a voter. And not disqualified as a voter. Pursuant to RS 19-4-1. Pursuant to RS 19-4-1. That I am faithful. And that I am faithful. Impartially and justly. Impartially and justly. Perform all duties of that office. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me God.
(Inaudible) I, Deborah J. Russo. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Saint. To the Saint. And to the government. And to the government. Established in the United States and this state. Under the authority of the people. So help me God. I, Deborah J. Russo. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I possess the qualifications. That I possess the qualifications. Prescribed by law. Prescribed by law. With the office of member of the Board of Education. With the office of member of the Board of Education. And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1. And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1. And that I am faithful. And that I am faithfully. Impartially and justly. Impartially and justly. Perform all duties of that office. Perform all duties of that office. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Hi. Hi, Thomas J. Spazato. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith. And that I will bear true faith. And allegiance to the Saint. And allegiance to the Saint. And to the government established in the United States and this state. And to the government established in the United States and this state. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. So help me God. I, Thomas J. Spazato. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I possess the qualifications. That I possess the qualifications. Prescribed by law. Prescribed by law. With the office of member of the Board of Education. With the office of member of the Board of Education. And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1. And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1. And that I am faithful. And that I am faithfully. Impartially and justly. Impartially and justly. Perform all duties of that office. Perform all duties of that office. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Mrs. Kukuzo, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dan Jacobson, here. Mrs. Flynn, here. Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Cookta?
Here.
Mrs. Spazinski?
Here.
Ms. Drusso?
Here.
Mrs. Solaire?
Mrs. Spazato?
Here.
At this time, I would like to take nominations for the office of President.
Madam Secretary, through great pleasure, I'd like to nominate Mr. Charles Kuzinski as President of the Nutley Board of Education. Mr. Kuzinski is a longstanding member, was a few different times on the Board, a member of the Board. He's shown great enthusiasm and energy in carrying out the mission of the Board, and I'd like to nominate him as President.
Second in.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for President? There being no further nominations, it is declared that the nominations are closed. Mrs. Kukuzo, please take the vote for President.
Mrs. Dan Jacobson, yes. Ms. Flynn, yes. Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Cookta?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Solaire?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Spazato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Kuzinski. Would you like to take your seat? No, this is your seat.
I would just like to take a few minutes to say a few words. I'd like to thank my fellow trustees for their vote of confidence in electing me President to this most prestigious Board of incredibly dedicated people. Many of you know, I served the Board of Education from 1984 until 1999, my first tenure on the Board, and I served as the Board President in 1985. My mentor back then was the late Frank Tenmore, a remarkable man who I tried to follow or emulate as much as I could. He served this Board for 29 years. Because of my tenure on the Board, I can attest that this present Board has been faced with some of the most challenging educational, administrative, and staffing decisions, and they have come through on every challenge productively and responsibly. I congratulate each of you on your service. I would also like to thank my family and supporters who have stood by me and offered counsel when some very difficult decisions needed to be made, and the outcome wasn't always the most popular choice. I want to assure the citizens, Mayor Alfonso Petracca, commissioners, the administration, teachers, and staff, that this Board is focused on making the best of every new opportunity, including sharing services whenever possible. We are committed to this town as well as our children. I believe Nutley is a very special place, which is made so by the very special people who live and serve here. Our children deserve every opportunity to be their best, and our citizens deserve the best of every opportunity we can find to do it less expensively. Again, thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to a very productive year. Nominations are now in order for the office of Vice President.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Vicki Flynn for Vice President of the Nutley Board of Ed. I know Vicki's been with us for only a year now, one or two.
We had fun in the election.
And I'm sure she'll be able to assist you add the Board as Vice President, and it's my honor to nominate Vicki.
There being no further nominations. It is declared that the nominations are closed. Mrs. Kukuzo, please take the vote for Vice President.
Mrs. Dan Jacobson, yes. Ms. Flynn, yes. Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Cookta?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to echo what Mr. Kuzinski said. I mean, it's been a very exciting year and some months since I've been elected on the Board. I've made, I think, good friends here on the Board. We've worked very hard, we work together, and I want to thank Mr. Spazato for nominating me, Mr. Cookta for his second, and all my trustees who have shared with me in our discussions their support for me. I'm looking forward to the next year. I think it's going to be a busy year. We've accomplished a lot, we have a lot more to accomplish. I want to thank all my family and friends who are always very supportive of what we're doing here on the Board, and the commissioners, I want to thank them as well, and our staff. I enjoy getting to meet with them more and more each day. I'm always available, and all of us board members are always available to listen and hear what our staff has to say, what our parents need to say, and I just encourage
Good evening, everybody. I do apologize for getting over pneumonia, so if I peel over a bit of coffee, I'll come back in a second to air me out. Reorganization meetings are exciting, transition of power seems peaceful. It's an exciting time for us transitioning as a Board, and also a time we should hold respect back on what we've accomplished, the outgoing members, and discuss where we're going and moving forward. I do want to thank first off, both now Commissioner Rogers, who was part of the Board when I was hired and here when I first started, as well as Ms. Sherman, for her service to the Board, and thank you very much, a lot of what we're going to talk about, these two people helped us to serve on the Night on the Board. Also want to congratulate both Mr. Spazato, Spazato, over here. There you are. Ms. Russo, as well as Mr. Klein, for their election. Congratulations, you're twelve ready. As we walk through a great deal, as Ms. Flynn and Mr. Kuzinski both spoke of, it's been an exciting, interesting, certainly not boring, 18 months, and so we want to talk about what we've done so far. Here we go. When we speak and try to organize these things, we try and talk in large, big-picture categories. The four that we're going to talk about today are going to fall on one of four categories, either administration, academics, technology, or finance. We're going to talk about them in that order. What we've tried to push since we've been here, this Board outgoing and new ones coming in, are two things, common vision and common language. And everything that you're going to hear tonight has been an effort to move in those directions, common vision and common language. For this presentation, we wanted to answer two questions. What have we accomplished in the past 18 months as a district? And how have our accomplishments impacted each of those four areas, making a difference for students, for our faculty and staff, and certainly for the community here in Nutley? When I first came on, the first thing we addressed was the organization of the Board. We actually looked at the structure of the Board of Education, and at our first Board retreat, moved to reorganize the Board so that we could be streamlined, we could focus our efforts more specifically in doing this. We took to creating Board goals, superintendent goals, and that example, if you will, led out to the rest of the district. Everything that we now do is goal-driven. Those goals are written down, articulated, they're public, and that's everything that we do has to be attached to those goals, otherwise we have to ask ourselves why in fact we're doing that. We then initiated a strategic planning effort. In order to get ourselves on one path together as a district, we brought in a consultant, and with the help of that consultant and about 15 members of the community, from Board members to parents, faculty, and administration, parents, students, as well as local community members, we endeavored for about five months to come up with a coherent vision for the district so that everything we did was focused in the right direction. That, I would say, was extremely successful and culminated with the presentation of our strategic plan, which can be found on our district website, and pretty much everything we do. Every time we get together and try and take our resources and put them towards something, this has now become our something. We know what we're going to do, we can always evaluate whether we're making progress, and it really has become our newer start here with moving forward. As far as our administration, we have had one specific committee now, and one of our focuses was to make sure that we communicate as effectively as possible. A part of that was, as Board and as an administration, we've been taking retreats. By retreats, we stay in district, but we get together with the purpose of talking specifically about self-assessment, where are we, and where are we going? So we can constantly ensure that whatever's best for the district, we're maximizing our resources and moving forward as quickly as is possible. We've truly upped the Board in public presentations. I've been at schools, as have our administrators, a number of our faculty members have, I've been to public engagements as well, as well as the Board meetings for certain. Almost every Board meeting, we try and make sure that we have important information that we're giving to the public, and that we make all of these available on our websites. Public service messaging system. I would like to say that while it's an extremely powerful tool, we never have had to use it, unfortunately, or fortunately, we've had many opportunities to use it over the past 18 months, and have gotten extremely positive feedback from the community because we've been keeping them informed in times where information was important to get out quickly and directly. We were able to communicate one message clearly, succinctly, make sure everyone needed had information, whether it involved inclement weather or the power going out in the high school, two things that have to do with academics and curriculum. We've taken advantage of that to make sure that all of our community members who want to be informed are informed. Superintendent Advisory Council, leveraging a group of teachers that give it their own time to meet me once a month and tell me what's going on in the buildings, so that we can brainstorm together and make sure, according to our strategic plan, we're moving in the same direction. Our A&amp;M's, I meet weekly with our association reps, sometimes more with their issues, but that collaboration, that communication, and that partnership really has allowed us to take great strides in a very short amount of time. And finally, this idea of a calendar, multiple calendars, everything available on the website in one place so that community members can find the information that they are looking for specifically. No longer having to go to six different places or wait for certain things to be updated in one place and not in another. We're trying to bring everything and make it as seamless as possible so that everyone who needs information has access to it. The Administration Committee was charged with school security and safety, something that we tackled in July 2011. We have been working with local law enforcement, experts from the state, as well as our Office of Emergency Management, and important critical people in district. We've been reviewing existing plans, we've been making alterations, edits. Ms. Valani has been doing a great deal of work, running multiple teams to make sure that we got everything where it was supposed to be. We're at a point where we've begun to make facility modifications, both technology and security as far as the exterior of the building, which is all part of our plan. At this point in time, we're meeting with administrators to go over the finalized revised plans, and we begin training on this with teachers, students, getting that information out as appropriate to parents and community members through the spring. So we're an exciting time here. That work has been ongoing for a year and a half. So between our documentation, our training in the hardware, and certainly the collaboration that has gone on, our best way of being prepared is making sure we're on the same page with everyone, we communicate not just internally, but with the local law enforcement, emergency medical personnel, in that we know exactly what should be taken, what steps should be taken in the case of any given emergency. We practice those on a regular basis so that we're prepared. The Administration also tackled QSEC, Quality, Single, Accountability, Continual. The state comes in and monitors every district on a rotating cycle. It was our turn. We did fairly well, in many instances, especially with Administration, things like policy. The state is very clear in where we were out of compliance, and they gave us a very good roadmap and my own strategic plan as to how we can improve. We've been working on that now the past eight, 10 months, it's a very hefty endeavor. Our policy manual is quite large, as are all the school districts, but we're committed to making sure we prioritize what we need to be addressed first, second, and third, and moving through the entire manual as quickly as possible to ensure that we're as up-to-date as we need to be. We redesigned how we hire. We had conversations at Board level, and then that went down into the district through the Administration as to how we publicize. We're now using electronic system to try and get as strong a candidate pool at all times for any position that we open. We then go from there through a very specific process that involves documentation, consistent questioning in multiple rounds, to make sure that regardless of the position, we find the absolute best candidate available to us at all times. We've had to use this over the past year and a half a number of times, from Assistant Superintendent Director of Critical Instruction to High School Principal, High School Assistant Principal, Middle School Principal, we had two elementary principals, our Director of Special Services, as well as the Director of Instructional Technology and Communication. And I'm very happy to report that the feedback we've been getting from all of these new staff members has been incredibly positive, and the feedback we've been getting from our internal staff members being part of the process, parents being part of the process, and certainly our Board members being part of the process, has been unbelievably positive, and it always brings us back to our strategic plan because we're constantly asking, who do we need based on where do we want to go? I talked about our policy updates, they are ongoing, something we try and make public, have multiple conversations, leverage the processes of the Board to ensure that we always have in black and white what the Board should do in specific situations. We've extended our, we've added to our extended aid programs. Servacio has worked with community members as well as members of the Board to make sure we're offering the most rich program we possibly can for as much of the year as we can, in communicating with the Board what the expense is based on the service that we supply to what we need. And as I said, we've made a number of additions. The district has branched out to outside partnerships, numbers of them, but two that I'm going to highlight were, we were connected with the Panasonic Foundation, right down to the trillion, Secaucus, with a select number of groups who have to be invited into the organization. And we were actually able to bring staff members, at certain times, board members, to a number of events in visiting districts. We were actually asked to host an upcoming visit in spring, to see if we're 100% prepared to do that. But the idea being that we are out there always seeing what's cutting-edge, what's available for our staff, our students, our parents, et cetera, to make sure that we're providing the best possible educational setting for everyone. The other piece is the structural rounds. We've partnered this year with a number of other districts, where we'll be bringing our staff there and they'll be bringing their staffs here to walk around and provide feedback on what we see when it comes to what's going on in the classroom. We really want to make sure, you mentioned the Administration Committee, that we're focused on academics. Speaking of academics, we've been busy. Based on our QSEC, there were specific recommendations, but what we've tried to do over the past year and a half is not share a pick and not go after individual things, but to build a solid foundation from which the district will grow and move forward. The first piece of that is a five-year plan, ensuring that we are always cutting-edge in every curriculum area. We came up with a five-year rotation where each of the five years has specific things that hit place, and then each content area goes through each of those five years separately, so that not only can we focus our efforts to a year, but we have the resources in place to support the recommendations that can come out of this five-year cycle. The program review process, we have a documented process now that allows us to investigate each content area one at a time to make sure we're asking the right questions, forcing us to see what's great about our program and what can be improved, constantly looking out to other districts to see what they're doing and see if it's something that we want to bring in, and make sure that before we put any resource forward, we know exactly how we want to proceed with the content area, and that by following both the program review process and this five-year cycle, we will always be where we need to be in all of our curriculum areas. Curriculum ready coming up QSEC, we had to update our standards, and therefore went through the entire process last summer, taking my math and language arts, something that we hope not to do at the same time moving forward, but again, involving our teachers. This foundation, the process that we put in place, the Board has supported. The idea of making sure that our teachers are driving all of this, from the curriculum work to the program review, certainly to the five-year process each year in that five-year cycle, that teachers are aware of what's going on, they're controlled what's going on, and they're asking questions that need to be asked, and the information and resources they need to be successful with in the classroom. Two things that have come out of that. We've just recently, under Ms. Valani, kicked off two very important pieces of work. First is our K-8 Language Arts or Literacy work. We're examining cutting-edge practices in literacy. We have a number of teachers who have volunteered for this work from every building and every grade level K-8. The idea is we're brought in consultants, we'll be looking at what everyone's been doing around the country, what best practice or cutting-edge research shows, so that we can kind of reformulate how we're going to approach literacy instruction, K-8. can kind of reformulate how we're going to approach literacy instruction, K-8. The other piece is that we've been, we haven't updated some of our materials and therefore our professional development and our approach to mathematics instruction, K-12. And so again, under Ms. Valani and Ms. Martin, we've got a number of teachers together, members of the Board of Education, as well as some parents, to sit with us as we research a new series to support our new math curriculum, which we are going to begin to pilot within the next month. The idea of we bring in that new series before the year's over, so we can begin training teachers in June through the summer and truly open up K-12 with a new approach to mathematics. All of these came out of my idea when we first sat down, we were committed to looking at data, which we'll talk a little bit more later, but one of the things we realized is that we think we can improve student performance in all areas. This came from teachers, it came from members of the Board of Education, it came from parents and community members, and it came from looking at the data. We've had conversation after conversation where what we do is we focus on the information in front of us. One of the things that we recognize is that we need more internal information. We should not be waiting for another organization, institution, or entity to tell us how we're doing with our students. And because of that, we've had a serious focus on assessment in district. That's what the common assessments, vector readiness assessments, as well as local assessments that we've built to match the other assessments in untested areas, so that we have information on an immediate basis so teachers can make informed decisions daily about where insurance we should go for individual students. We can match both across the district, so when we see something working, we can highlight that and share it. When we find issues with things that don't seem to be working based on performance, we can ask the right questions. Are we assessing appropriately? Is this what's important? What do our students need to know and be able to do? How well are they doing that? How can we give back? Process changes. Two huge pieces over the last eighteen months is that we, and again, huge credit to our association and our teachers and administrators for stepping up amidst everything swirling around the state, they were more than willing and excited to explore teacher evaluation, administrator evaluation. The board really took a big hand in pushing, helping to push us forward. We actually changed our entire administrative process when it comes to evaluation, what we look for, how we look for it, how we report out, and we tried to make sure that three things were clear. It's about growth, it's about learning, and it's about accountability in that order. We fully believe that if everyone's involved in a true process that stimulates growth, we're going to be fine. But that has to bear focus, it has to be collaborative, it has to be built on trust and specific evidence. We have frameworks for both our administrators and our teachers at this point to make sure we have, as I said before, that common language so that we can move forward together. And again, as I talked, everything that we have done in the past eighteen months has been based on a commitment to use data. What data is helpful, but data is not, making sure we have as much as best awareness as possible so that we always have the best understanding of where we are based on where we want to go. Communication. Internally, we've tried to create as many opportunities for staff to get out of the district and see what else is going on, and to share within the district what great things are happening here, getting teachers on a peer-to-peer basis into other classrooms. We took administrators to conferences that we had never attended prior and brought back a wealth of information that has helped to continue to move the district forward, making sure board members are attending and excitedly attending, things are available through school boards and the rest, and we bring board members to some of the professional development sessions that are going on so that we have full understanding and buy-in at all levels in the district to make sure we're prepared. We've made a great deal of changes. Standing administrative meetings, we are meeting on a regular basis, coordinators' meetings, principal meetings, as well as full administrative roundtables on a regular basis, sometimes weekly. Parent information sessions, working with the billiard with the guidance department to set up a regular process where every year kindergarten parents get certain sessions, first grade parents get certain sessions, all the way through, so that we're working with parents on a long plan, long-range plan. So as a father of a kindergarten student, I see what the next steps are, what I have to help my student accomplish now, when I should be excited, when I should be concerned, and where I go for information and to make sure that I'm an involved parent. Academics has had to deal with a lot of state, federal grants, specific plans, requirements and accountability coming from the state and federal level, everything from Q-SAC and CLB, which we've completely turned around as far as how we're approaching, what we're doing. We've taken lessons, as I said, from the Q-SAC findings and how we can make the district better, but also our Race to the Top Plan, where we apply for money based on what we think is best for district. We have not applied willy-nilly to somehow, just to see how much money we can get. We look at our strategic plan to see where we want to go, figure out what action would help us get there, and have targeted our efforts on those areas. Technology, we've had a lot of work over the past eighteen months when it comes to technology. We spent a great deal of time with teachers, administrators, parents, as well as board members and central office admin, going through a process where we embedded and selected a new student information system. We're now fully into real-time, parent portals out to parents, student portals out to students, a whole different way of sharing information, extremely new to the district and we're still learning. If nothing else, we brought the whole district together, we can get information across buildings immediately, it's seamless, it's consistent, it's like registration, and it's made us as a district able to provide more important information to the people who need it right away. ASAP, we moved to a paperless system when it comes to staff attendance. This saved us a great deal of money, it streamlined the process, there was definitely, with all of these, some learning curves involved, but it's allowed us to reallocate resources that were pushing paper away to places where they're helping push construction forward. Performance Action, it's a student performance warehouse and data analysis system. When we talked about our common assessments, we're putting all this into one system so our teachers can manipulate the data. It's not your standard pencil and paper test anymore where we mark everything, we put it in a grade book, and that's it, we can only take that information so far. We can break information down into specific skills based on sub-populations, we can put that information in teachers' hands so that as we move forward, they're going to manipulate the system to answer questions in a real-time basis so they can make, again, informed daily decisions about insurance for their kids. And then, of course, again, the big push was staff in our process to select a district ready platform. Our new website launched earlier this year, earlier last year, and we've gotten a great deal of feedback. It seems we can't keep up with domain, which is something we keep working to do, but the goal again is to make sure that everybody has one place to go directly for the consistent and accurate information when it comes to the district. And I've gotten a great deal of positive feedback because we do our best to try and answer questions before they come up and certainly after they come up, and people now, as I've seen through the community, are hitting the website when they want to know the real answer about what's going on in the district. Hardware, Mr. Viemeister and his crew have been sweeping through the district, updating things like cameras, certainly our car stretch, which are fully functional at the high school, are almost there at all of our elementary schools, and we've already steamrolled the process here at the middle school where we're hoping to be up relatively quickly, so that all seven of our buildings are car-streck accessible. This has allowed us to rekey buildings, really increasing security, and Mr. Nick Lebne making sure his team is around so that our exterior and interior are up to date with all the possible high-tech actions that keep us safe, but also something as simple as keys, that our keys are safe. Our iPad app program is one example, we brought a number of new tools, but what we've been doing is bringing them in slowly. So again, we talked about the internet foundation, we're not pulling out and just spending money. We're looking to see what the districts are doing, we're getting some teachers who are excited about trying things, and we're supporting those teachers first to see how things go, to see where we want to actually direct things moving forward. Always taking half a step first, then before we take a full step, before we take a line lead. Our trouble-taking system, making sure it's no longer paper-based, again, Mr. Viemeister working with a number of secretaries as well as the staff members to make sure that we're getting information on a regular basis and he can get his staff to build the way it is to where it's most needed at the right time. Last category, finance, how do we pay for all this? Good big question. One of the things we have to make sure as a district is that if we're going to move forward, we're taking specific steps every single year to make our budget more and more healthy. And I use the word healthy because it's the word our auditor used when he most recently gave the word saying that the budget was in extremely healthy condition compared to last year three years, and that was one step. We have a long way to go, school budget's a difficult thing, but I do want to point out that we started to move things around based on the strategic plan. Again, this idea of a foundation and a common vision and a common language, we're building the budget with the board based on where we need the district to go, looking at data and looking at our plan and saying, this is where we need resources, moving those around, making difficult decisions as a board and as an administration to ensure that we have the right resources and the right things. Trying again to communicate that to the community is not always easy, but we try and make sure we're out there face-to-face so that they can ask their questions and get the right information. Again, we were auditing, with our audit, we had a continued reduction of recommendations and review findings, we were in compliance with our contracts, and most importantly, that confirmation that we were moving in a healthy direction. Again, should try and go paperless. Going paperless is not just an efficiency piece as far as information, but it saves us money and resources which we can direct toward our strategic plan. Moving electronically, able to see information in more real-time, in which case we can make sure that things are proceeding as they need to be. When things get held up, we have the opportunity to kind of jumpstart the process and make sure we're getting the resources in the right hands as quickly as possible. In human resources and behavioral, we've done a great deal of things, almost all electronic, but we've had new staff members come in, trying to make sure that, again, for our staff, information is out more effectively, that things are done more consistently, and reducing the number of errors that we have as we move through things. Again, this idea that if we go from our administration and our common vision through academic, which is our core, supporting it with resources and technology and building a budget allows us to move forward as a district disguised as a leader, and that's what we're excited about as a board and a community. Again, this is big picture, talking about the last eighteen months and what we've done in each of these four areas. More specifics, you can search this on our website, and we want to make sure we keep moving forward. If you want to take this opportunity, the superintendent, thank the board that hired me. Mr. Ryan is here from that board, the board that worked over the past eighteen months, and just saying that the board is moving forward, so we're very excited about what
We've now come to the portion of this meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulations, 601, lasts twenty minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try and stay within that requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please refer me to, will you state your name and address each and every time you address the board? Will the first person please step forward and tell us what you wish to say? We'll close that portion of the meeting. We're going to move the resolutions. Mr. Spazaro, will you move resolutions? I'm sorry, Mr. Reed, will you move our resolutions, academic resolutions one and two?
Yes, Mr. President, regarding academic resolutions, one is to make a motion for the board. That's ready.
Take the roll call, please.
This is Dan Chalmers?
Yes.
Miss Lynn?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Spazaro?
Yes.
This is Besar?
Yes.
Mr. Zetsky?
Yes.
Mr. Spazaro, will you move administration resolution number one, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move administration resolution number one as written.
Take the roll call, please.
This is Dan Chalmers?
Yes.
Miss Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Flann?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Spazaro?
Yes.
Mr. Zetsky?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Cook, do we move financial resolutions one and two, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move finance resolutions one and two with the insertion of Mr. Zetsky as president and Ms. Lynn as vice president in resolution number one.
Second, take the roll call, please.
This is Dan Chalmers?
Yes.
Miss Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Flann?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Spazaro?
Yes.
Mr. Zetsky?
Yes.
Ms. Martin, will you move resolution, personal resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move personal resolution number one as written.
Second.
Take the roll call, please.
This is Dan Chalmers?
Yes.
Miss Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Flann?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Spazaro?
Yes.
Mr. Zetsky?
Yes.
In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow thirty minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. Any questions from the audience now? If not, I close that portion of the agenda. Full business. Mr. Dan Chalmers?
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to make a presentation to Mr. Cook. On behalf of the board, we would like to present this platoon, gratitude for all your hard work as president of the Board of Education. We've had a very busy and productive year and a half, some highlights included hiring a new superintendent, assistant superintendent, four principals, directors of technology, special services, and more language. We have streamlined work-credit structure, participated in contract negotiation, revised our policies for reporting professional contracts, use of cell phone and text messaging during meetings, adopted a program of studies from the high school and middle school, updated the climate records of math curriculum, developed a strategic plan for the district, and opened up a new website in Carolina, Florida, and these all scratched service. Your leadership skills have been a major factor in our success. Thank you for your continued dedication.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the Enis Plack, Mr. Spazaro, for your countless hours of dedicated service serving the Board of Education Vice President from 2011 to 2012.
Thank you very much for taking the time. We all know what's entailed in the positions you ran and what was going on inside our district at the time, the citizens, I'm sure, thank you for your hard work and your commitment. Should we start again?
Thank the board for this recognition, but as you all know, it's not an individual, it's the entire board, it's the superintendent, the administration, the staff, teachers, it's every, the parents, and I'd like to congratulate them on all the accomplishments.
Thank you. New business? If not, okay. Before we adjourn, I just would like to invite anybody if they'd like to stop up. We're going to have a couple of, up at the old Canal Inn, if you'd like to stop up for a drink, you're welcome to. I'll take the most important.
I'll adjourn. Second.
All set? All of them? Thank you.